What are the wishes of the board?
They're approved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three is the new business, discuss and or take action on audit results and recommendations for fiscal year 2013-14. Mr. Darney?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to now turn over the report to, I guess, either Ms. Caitlin or Ms. Sarah Hardy. Let them tell you about our audit.
You go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to welcome both of you. Thank you for your diligent work. We look forward to hearing your report this evening.
Thank you. We appreciate working with the City of Terreby.
Well, first, I think you guys all have your packet with all of your audit materials. So first, I'll start with the financial statements. So they're the big packet. The audit this year's went very well, very similar to last year. You won't see very much different from these financial statements to last year's financial statements as you flip through. We have, we present all of the same financial statements. The same management discussion section, as well as the notes. The biggest change to these financial statements is going to be the inclusion of GASB-65. And if you flip to the first page of your notes, it is page 24. There's a paragraph that talks about it. And basically, this is changing, it's more of a terminology change than anything else, but they're changing the classification of deferred revenues into a new item on your financial statements called deferred inflows and outflows of revenues. So you will see that line item on your financial statements as being different. And basically, that represents your property taxes, your delinquent property taxes and your property taxes that just were billed on October 1st. So if you want to see how it looks different on your face of your financial statements, if you turn to page 10, you'll see there's a whole separate header for your property taxes.
Under the liabilities.
Yes, right underneath the liability. So now it says assets, and then liabilities, and then there's deferred inflows of resources, and then net position. So that's the biggest change. And like I said, it's a brand-new GASB. So we, there's not a lot of guidance on it. And so we have been working closely with the comptroller, trying to make sure that we're getting it exactly how they want to see it. And so I spoke with them in the past few days. And there may be a slight adjustment to the presentation on page 12. We may have to increase that number slightly, just as a, either as a prior period adjustment or through your property tax receivables. I think the delinquent property taxes that haven't been received in your measurement period, which is 60 days, will probably have to be added to that after my discussions with the comptroller. So we want to make sure that we get it right. So I've been trying to work as closely with them as possible, so that it's, we get it correct. There's not a lot of...
There are not a lot of examples out because not a lot of cities have implemented the GASB-65 early. And it is new, required for implementation this year.
So that's your biggest change here. Does anyone have any questions on the main financial statements before we move on to the findings in the back?
Can you talk a little bit about adjustments that we made during the audit? Because they've been looking at the internal financials.
Uh-oh.
And so that's the only thing that's different from their internal financials to our audit, the actuals, the audit adjustments. So I asked her to just kind of go over what we adjusted. Okay, that was one of my questions, is the findings of the actuals, what was, you know, what was stated, or what's your concern there, or what can we look at?
Gotcha. Okay. Well...
Brandy, could I borrow your copy right there? I picked up the wrong packet. I don't want to go any further without it. Thank you. If you're not using it, I know you're busy writing, so thank you. Go ahead.
The, we did make a few adjustments. Of course, there's the district-wide financial statements that, or the government-wide financial statements that include your fixed assets and your debt. So we did make adjustments to put the fixed assets on your books and to put the debt on your books, since normal city operations don't have those. We also made adjustments to accounts payable. And we made an adjustment for the school facilities taxes. We accrued vacation, and we also adjusted the property tax receivable. So those are a few things that you will see that are different.
Can you clarify when you said most cities don't have it that way?
Oh, most, oh, sorry. Most local governments, or almost all local governments that I've seen, they operate day-to-day on their fund financial statements. So that's page 12 and 14. They don't operate on a government-wide financial statement. That means they operate on a modified accrual basis, yearly. And then at the end of the year, when they have their audit, they adjust their financial statements, so they can include just the first two financial statements, which are government-wide.
The main things that are not on the fund financial statements are fixed assets and debt. So those things are put on the financials for the government-wide financials, and those are presented in the...
They're page 10 and 11.
Yeah, thank you. You said you adjusted the schools' facilities. What was that adjustment?
That adjustment was, they, the revenue as it came in, it went through the general fund. And so the, it was just a simple reclass to take it out of the general fund and move it into the facilities.
Because it is a restricted fund?
Correct. Well, it just wasn't, yes. It was placed, it needed to be in the facilities fund, not the general fund. So we made a reclass.
It had been just a pass-through prior to that reclassification?
Yeah. I think so. I don't know if it ever had actually made it to the facilities fund. I think it used to be under, under the previous management. I think they were making an entry at the end of the year, and then the current one just didn't know to make it. So we found it when we compared it and made the adjustment. I think it was around $17,000.
Might be a good time to talk about the accounts payable as it relates to your finding.
Are you guys, are you ready to move on to the findings? Okay. So if you flip all the way to the very back of the audit, this is where we actually start talking about the findings. So it's page 42. So like I said, we've been talking with the comptrollers pretty closely. And one question that we had out to them was about budgeting, and about whether you budget on a cash basis or on a modified accrual basis. And we had been hoping, all of the research that I had seen, it said cash basis. And so we were hoping to only have the one finding which is presented to you. But after discussions with him this morning, we actually have a second one, which is not up on your desk, so I'll talk about two. The first one is pretty much a continuation of the finding last year. It is, it's discussing internal controls and making sure that they're in place, so that they catch any reporting errors and things like that. So we have a management letter attached, which describes much more in detail exactly what we would recommend implementing to correct this finding in the next year. And then the second finding is the one that you guys don't have in front of you, is the one that's related to the budget. Basically, what happened is when we, AP is not accrued, oh, AP is accounts payable. So what all the city owes to other vendors is usually put into the system when it's paid. So what happened at the end of the year was AP kind of spiked, and they had a bunch of AP that we had to accrue with the audit. It's about $70,000, I think, was the adjustment. And that pushed your expenditures over the budgeted appropriations. So before that, you were fine. Your budget was, your actual expenditures were lower than your budget expenditures, so you were good. And then when we made our audit adjustment, it pushed you over. So according to the state comptroller, that is a finding. And going forward, we would recommend that you actually go in and put your AP in as you know about it, so that you can amend the budget, so that you don't have the same finding next year.
We understand that the CFO has begun doing this. You'll start to see accounts payable changing on your statement of financial position as he enters invoices, as he receives them, and as they are due. And then it will be reduced as he pays those bills.
So it hopefully won't be reoccurring. This one happened because we came in and found the AP. So now Tom is putting them in on a probably weekly basis. So hopefully, this finding has already been resolved. And so those are the only two findings, current year findings that we have. The one prior year finding that was cleared was another budgeting finding, but this one was about the actual data within the budget, and detailing out the payments of debt between interest and principal. And that has been corrected. Oh, this is, also, as I was talking to the comptroller about budgeting, and trying to make sure that we understood everything right, I mentioned to him that Tom had been working very closely with M Task. And he was very, very happy about that. He said that almost everything that they saw that came through M Task was really good. So that was a little kudos. Does anyone have any questions about these? I'm sorry we had to add the finding that you guys, I could pass it around, but I only have one copy.
Can you explain a little bit more? How does that affect, it doesn't affect the numbers. You didn't find, it was already included in our year's budget?
The AP?
Yeah.
It wasn't included in the budget?
It was.
It was. If you actually, I can show you what, where it is. Let me find the page. I think it's page around 21. 21. It's on page 21. So if you find the line that's called total expenditures, you'll see where the total expenditures for the budget was $5,342,020, where your actual expenditures were $5,376,548. So this discrepancy, or this over, going over your budget, is directly due to the increase in AP. So these were invoices that were paid prior to the year-end, but were actually due during, were due on June 30th, 2014. So I'm not certain if that completely answered your question.
Just to understand, we weren't reporting them when we received the APs, only when we paid them?
Correct, yes. When you, you are now, but at the time when the bills...
We were not.
At the time, yes.
And then just clarity to that, was that a group of accounts payable? Was that a 30-day base of accounts payable? Where did that kind of...
It's based on 60 days.
It's 60 days?
Mm-hmm, it's 60 days. I don't, I can pull out my computer if you want to know the actual invoices that make it up. But yeah, every, we look at, your guys' measurement period is 60 days. So anything that was paid within 60 days, that was due by 6/30/2014, or was invoiced as of 6/30/13.
And I keep kind of going to Tom, because I'm asking a specific, and I don't know who will answer, I don't, whoever feels best, too. That would be like the end of May or the end of June, that you gave us financial records. At that point, you were not fully posted. Is that what would have caused this?
I believe what would, what caused it was not entering the invoices, and then we had some that lagged, that were not entered timely, which now we're entering, as they come in daily, they're going into our accounts payable. And then as far as the 60-day, there's only a few expenditures that fall into that range. And the primary is, well, I'll have to let Caitlin answer that. But I'm, I think, I'm not sure what the invoices are. But I would like to say the invoices. I thought we were under budget, but at the same time...
Well, now that he said he wants to see them, I guess I'll say if they're convenient for you, yes, that might be. Whereabouts did those in the 60-day turnaround come about? And what were those invoices? Were they held invoices? You're saying you're not sure, so that even... So my question would be, on June 30th or July 30th, you gave a report, and that was to be posted and specific of the accounts of the city. And obviously, if these came after the fact, and then it put us to where we were over budget, somewhere in there, they were lagging. Is that fair to say? The bills were lagging? It is not uncommon to have invoices that are invoiced to you in June, for example, that are not paid until July. So it's not uncommon that they were not paid until July. They just weren't accrued in your accounts payable. And so that is, that's the adjustment that we found. So they were not included in your expenses, and they were not included as a liability. And yes, we'll be glad to pull up the specifics of the invoice.
Since he's asking, I guess we'll give him clarity, too. It's a good thing.
But Sarah, as I understand correctly, that had been always the practice, that we, it's not something that Tom did.
No.
It's all previous. So basically, the one-time adjustment here puts us on a expense monthly, makes it balanced with the fiscal year, versus we were always in a 60-day lag.
Yes. And now, we made this same adjustment last year.
Right, I remember that.
Last year, it was only $10,000. So this is just a timing situation, that the amount ended up being so material. It just so happens that your invoices that you had not paid yet at the end of 6/30/14 were more expensive than they were last year.
Last year, right. But if Tom's now putting them in as they come in?
Yes.
Then they will match, each month will match exactly.
Exactly. And your expenses will be representative of the expenses that were actually incurred in that month.
In that month?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, whether they were paid or not, yes. And that was where I was saying, at the posting of your report, that was not identified.
Correct. The reports are pretty much on a cash basis, what came in went out during that month.
And I heard the number 70,000, the difference between the 5342 and the 5376?
No, I think that was AP.
Yeah, the total amount that we accrued was 70,000. Not exactly. It was 70,000 over the budget at June 30th, 2014. That was the adjustment for accounts payable.
I don't, I think the over-budget is much smaller than that.
And in putting them, as Commissioner Vassell was saying, as inputting now on a daily basis, or how you're posting is, you would be able to do a 30-day review and have specific expenditures and the actuals? As long as your vendors have already invoiced you, and he's received the invoice, he can put it back in the appropriate month before he gives the financials to you. Okay.
I'm, I'm not certain if this will fully answer the question, but of the 70, there's 17 to Local Government Corp. that appears to be paid on 7/1. There's 18,000 that went to Tennessee Consolidated Retirement on 7/1.
I asked her to just list the big-dollar ones, not, there are quite a few that add up to the $70,000.
Do they actually bill the retirement? Or is that something you have to do monthly?
They have to be in the TCRS by the 10th of the next month. So it's the previous month's bill, but you pay it the month after.
So you have, you wait till it's put in before you can...
Right. Even if it was put in, I wouldn't pay it until July. But, yeah, it's the difference between cash accounting and modified accrual.
There's 6,000s to Griggs &amp; Maloney, Inc. There's one to Middle Tennessee Electric for a little over 6,000.
That was also July 1st?
That was July 16th. Our list only goes through, yeah, that was, that one was July 16th. These were all, all of those were paid in July that I listed off. So all of these were paid in July, just, they were invoiced to the city as of June or earlier. However, that doesn't mean that they were necessarily late payments. They were just...
Yeah, so they could have been due, and we paid it on the due date, but it still has to be counted.
Sure, yeah. We'll be glad to send you a complete list of these invoices, unless you want us to go through each one. Did she have more on that?
Those are, I listed off the big ones.
The larger ones, uh-huh.
The rest of them were under $2,000, $1,000. They were all paid in the month of July.
Good. Feel free to continue if you'd like. Management letter.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions about the findings? Okay. Well, let's move on to the audit letters, then. So the first letter that I have has, starts with, "In planning and performing our audit of your financial statements," has drug fund underlined, and fixed assets underlined, and bolded. And this is our management letter, so this is our more informal suggestions. A lot of them weren't elevated to the level of a finding. They're just our suggestions going forward. So one of ours is related to the, the first one on here is related to the adjustment for the drug fund, which, which there was, there were some drug-related fines received into the general fund. And then there was a journal entry to reverse them. So this is just a suggestion that they just be received directly into the drug fund going forward, which I believe Tom has already corrected. Then the next suggestion is about keeping up with fixed assets, having your own, having your own fixed asset listing, and keeping track of their useful life and their depreciation. Right now, we have the schedule, and the CFO will provide a list of additions and disposals. So we would just suggest that you guys start maintaining your own list and calculating your own depreciation.
Was this a finding we discussed last year also?
Correct, yes.
A recommendation?
Yeah.
I didn't hear a number, you may have not said, if I can, for clarity. On the drug fund that moved into general fund, what was the amount there?
Let me look.
And you said it was reversed back.
And what was the date on that?
I think it was throughout the year. I, that, that was, that was how the previous administration had done it. And so that was just how it kind of rolled over. And then at the end of the year, we flipped it, so that it went into the proper fund. Let's see if I can find it. It looks like this was actually the $17,000 fine that I was, I must have gotten my numbers mixed up. So it was about $17,000 of drug-related fines.
So it wasn't one deposit and...
I, no, I don't think so.
It was throughout the year?
I think it was throughout the year. I believe so. The next, the next item that we had was, we had a, during our internal control test, there were a few missing receipts for credit card expenses. And so we would suggest maintaining all of those receipts. The second, on the second page, you'll see our chart of segregation of duties. So this should look very similar to last year's. So this is, this is, a lot of these have already been implemented, are already happening. I placed it in here so that just for, just for everyone's knowledge of who should be doing what. And it also includes entering AP into the software, and other additional internal controls, and actually assigning it to an individual within your organization.
The idea with segregation of duties is that no one would need to go searching for an error. No one would need to go searching for the $17,000 that should have been in the drug fund that was really in the general fund. If you, if you have proper segregation of duties, you have unrelated persons that are checking this number to that number, and it doesn't agree this month, so why not? You know? And then the investigation begins about, you know, what error occurred that didn't allow me to do this thing I'm supposed to do every month. So if you have the segregation of duties, no one has to go searching for, did we transfer all the funds into the drug fund? It comes up in the normal course of everyone's duties.
So we had, we had some suggestions with the cash receipts, that it may all be opened by a person independent of the accounting function, and then entered into the system by the finance clerk.
Didn't we have that recommendation last year?
I believe so, yes. And if you flip to the next page, it continues on that we think that the finance director should review all the codings, and also should document his review with signing off on it. And that documentation of property tax should include a summary receipt statement. And we also suggest that copies of checks received should be kept with the receipt log and other supporting documents of the deposit. So those are all additional internal controls over cash receipts. And then for cash disbursements, we, I believe we had the same finding last year, that department heads, or the same suggestion last year, that the department heads are approving all of their invoices, but they're not always documenting it by signing it off. So we would suggest that they actually code and sign off on all of the expenditures. And we also would suggest that they receive their own quarterly financial statements for their department, so they can review their revenues and their expenditures, and then actually document reviewing that by signing off on that, just so that they're aware of where they sit versus their budget. The next suggestion in relation to internal controls is accounts payable, which we've talked about and has already been implemented, is actually entering the AP in as you receive the invoices, as opposed to when they're paid. The next, the next findings related to bank reconciliations, there were a few bank reconciliations that, well, I think there was one bank reconciliation in the main general fund that was out of balance. And that has, that has already been corrected. And going forward, I believe it's, the next reconciliations have all been perfectly in balance as well. So we also suggested, in relation to the bank reconciliations, that the city manager receive the bank statements unopened, and reviews all the transactions before giving it to the CFO, or to the finance director to reconcile. So that will just give an extra layer of control, that he's looking at all of the payments and everything before anyone touches it.
It states here that the cash account, I see cash account had not been reconciled since November 2013. Was that reconciled or done somewhere in another account?
It was, it was...
It was, it, it was reconciled.
Was that the only account?
It was just, it was reconciled, it just wasn't always completely in balance. The, it was always a little bit out of balance and month, every month, it kind of got a little bit bigger. And then when we came here and we, we noticed it, Tom got some training, and now it's, now it's completely resolved. I think it was something to do with their system. It had a bunch of unclassified transactions, which were all kind of right at the bottom of the reconciliation, and it was just kind of figuring out how to get them into, into order, if I remember correctly.
And Tom, he had identified that it was not in balance. He knew it wasn't in balance.
Because it says a ledger's, it were, I think we were monitoring one and other, the ledger cash balance versus the bank's cash balance.
True.
So at that point, the ledger was what he was reporting monthly.
Yes. And, and so we lent some assistance in, in classifying some of these transactions so that it would, would be in balance. And he's been able to successfully reconcile going forward with that same process.
And are the, how many bank accounts are we speaking about?
One.
That, one. That's, okay. Because it says the LGIP.
Oh, the, those bank accounts are, are very, have very little activity, so those are actually not reconciled. So our suggestion is that, is that the city manager review those bank statements and approve any transfers quarterly. There's, they're so small, and there's so few activity, there's, we're not actually suggesting that they be reconciled every month. That, that's the control that we would recommend, given the amount of activity flowing through those accounts. Okay.
Payroll.
So the next one is payroll. And so currently, the director deposits payroll payment, payments. The city manager reviews them, however, he doesn't document it. So we would suggest documenting those just like any other dispersment. And also, this, I think this finding was, or this suggestion was the same as last year, that previous year's payroll boxes are kept in the police department. And while the area is secure, they're not actually in a locked room away from everything, which we would suggest them actually be moved in somewhere like that, just to protect the employee's personal information.
Has that already been implemented? No? Okay.
I got it.
I'll let y'all deal with that. I'll get a yes and a no.
And then, then the last one is about current and complete employee files on the employees. Some, we, we note, we noted some instances during, during our testing where employee files were, were, didn't include all of these listed items. They were incomplete. They were missing a, a date of hire or a pay rate change or things like that. So we'd suggest keeping complete employee files, and you could also conducting random reviews to make sure that they are actually complete.
We spoke of this last year also.
Correct.
Who handles that? Who's, who's the oversight on that subject?
That would be me currently.
And who handled it in 2013?
I believe Crystal.
CFO at, each time CFO.
Yes. Or, and before that, I don't know if somebody was involved in HR before that, but I'm believing that there's, that it, it's recommended through MTS that the files be in my office locked up.
Okay. And that, that's the conclusion of our, our management letter. So those, those are all of our suggestions. Does anyone have any questions about any of those? Okay. And then the last audit letter that we have is a required communication with the board. And so it walks you through all of the major highlights of the audit. It talks about if there were any new accounting policies adopted, which there was, the implementation of GASB 65, which was required and proper for them to do. It also talks about significant accounting estimates. All of the accounting estimates are standard, so we didn't find any of those to be particularly sensitive to you guys. We did have two note disclosures that we thought were sensitive, which is the long-term debt disclosure in Note 5, and then also the implementation of GASB 65. We didn't encounter any difficulties dealing with the management. They were extraordinarily helpful. I think Tom gave up like a whole week of work and probably worked a lot extra just providing us with everything. So that was great. And then next, we list off all of our audit adjustments, which I briefly went over before. It was the first bullet point of long-term debt, long-term liabilities, and deferred inflows on the government-wide financial statements. Those are the, the standard entries to adjust the modified accrual to full accrual to report the government-wide financial statements. And then we also recorded depreciation expense, accounts payable, school facilities tax revenue, accrued vacation, and property tax receivable. And I actually, I, I gave you the wrong number for the schools' facilities tax before, so let me get it for you, because I was thinking of that drug fund entry. That one was 126,000. And what actually was happening was, this is, this is a general fund account. So what happened was, the normal coding of that account was actually going to an equity account as opposed to a revenue account. So that was actually a reclass, moving it out of an equity account into a revenue account, which Tom has already, has already started to do. I think that rolled over from the previous CFO's accounting. And it was, it had, they received those fees monthly, so that was, that was where the previous CFO entered it and Tom continued. So we've now created a new revenue account so that there won't be that adjustment next year. To, the, we had no disagreements with management. And to our knowledge, management hasn't consulted any other accountants. And I think that that is pretty much it on this letter. Does anyone have any, any questions on this one? This one is kind of, it highlights everything that's important.
So even though we had a couple of findings and several recommendations, the audit still went extremely well. It was no small feat for the current administration to deal with four or five auditors at a time for an entire week and answer a bunch of questions for a period in which they were not here. So that is, that is an extremely difficult position for any finance director, and they handled it really with ease. And so even though we do have a couple of findings, we've already been working with management to resolve a lot of those. A lot of them have already been corrected. And it, it, at least the one about the, the budget and the AP, we expect not to reoccur.
Any questions from the board?
As far as, you know, we did the finance committee this year. That was something new that y'all recommended. Did y'all see any difference versus, like, we saw? I mean, I think it was helpful having the finance committee review and then bring findings. But as you went through, are we doing it how you intended? And did you see any, or have a chance to review any of their minutes?
I, I did review the finance committee minutes. The, the committee appears to be doing what we intended them to do. So a, a smaller group of, of members and outside citizens collaborating on the budget to, to actual, establishing the budget, and, and all of that seems to be working as, as we expected. We did get a little bit of clarification on the budgeting process, talking to the comptroller budgeting guru today. And they do allow cities to use some excess cash in terms of balancing their budget. So if your budgeted expenses are going to exceed your budgeted revenues, you can dip into existing cash, but the existing cash has to be unrestricted. It has to be actual cash, first of all. Can't be your fund balance. It has to be unrestricted, and you have to remove your, your accounts payable, those things that you're already committed to pay from it. So that, that really is not relevant to the 2014 audit, but good information going forward for your budgeting process.
Other comments or questions from the board this evening?
Thank you for sticking with us for another year and all your good work.
You're very welcome. We enjoyed it.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
I second.
Discussion?
I'm sorry.
In discussion with staff, city manager, Mr. Darty? Anyone like to make comments?
I would just like to make the comment of how well we worked with them, Tom did. I just answered questions. But Sarah and Caitlin have been super nice to work with. All of their staff was real nice. They were very courteous. And, you know, we couldn't ask for a better situation that we had to go through. And of course, Tom, we stood it all himself, and he's, he's done such a great job with it. Thank you.
Thanks.
The questions I have, I'm sure I'll get on the phone or the email in the next few hours and get some answers. That's all I have.
With that comment or question, is there any concerns as we move forward with an approval of the audit that you would like to address?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any other staff comments? Any other discussion from the board?
I would just like to say thank you. And of course, thank you to y'all for coming in. I know you've helped Tom through the year, and that's not necessarily all, always part of your job. I think he's called on you at least once or twice when he came in. But, and so, that being said, we really appreciate your continued support. That means a lot to us. And then just, you know, good job, Tom and Mr. Hall, I know, coming in and taking somebody else's budget over and just having different practices, you know, how one person does it versus another, and coming in and trying to put those pieces together. You've done an excellent job. And I know the finance committee has been very important to you, just having that second or third, fourth set of eyes. And so I just wanted to use the comment section to say congratulations, you survived.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, I'd like to thank also the staff and the commitment. Appreciate your efforts. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second all over the house. All in favor?
Aye.
Special meeting adjourned. Thank you.